All right, my phone says 6:30, so to respect everyone's time, we'll get started right away. I want to welcome everybody and thank you for attending the Board of Education Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Women's Democratic League of Frederick County and Northern Frederick County Democrats. Though those two groups may be partisan in nature, this forum is not. All candidates were invited to attend, and we greatly appreciate all of you for being here tonight. The Board of Education is a nonpartisan position, and the hosts of this affair support the nonpartisan nature of this election and this forum. I'm Gary Brennan, I'll be the moderator this evening. I'm not a professional moderator, so bear with me, but I am a professional educator. I've been with the Frederick County Public Schools System for 32 years. I currently teach at Brunswick High School, and I served 10 years as the president of the Frederick County Teachers Association. I want to thank the Women's Democratic League and the North County Democrats for allowing me to participate in this important discussion we're going to have tonight. Before we start, I also want to thank the Vermont Public Library for hosting us here and for their hospitality and helping to set up and run this event. Now for the rules. Each candidate will be given one minute for an opening statement. I will then ask questions drawn from a list of topics that were shared with all the candidates before this evening, although no candidate has seen any of the specific questions. Each candidate may answer up to three questions, since there's such a large field of candidates. If we let you each answer every question, we will be here until tomorrow morning, if nobody wants that. So you have three questions that you're choosing to answer. It is up to you to decide whether you want to answer a question or not. However, once you've answered your three questions, you may not answer anymore. Candidates will also have the option to make two 30-second rebuttals to another candidate's question, two questions they choose not to answer. Rebutts will come after those folks who want to answer the question. So it won't be after individual speaks, but at the end of that round. We'll start each candidate, we'll have one minute, oh, excuse me. At the end, each candidate will have one minute to make a closing statement, and then we'll be done for the evening. Our timer tonight, official timer, is Rosario Campos, would you raise your hand, so everyone knows where you are. And Renee Knapp will be handling our paddle, which will indicate, oh, it's Rosario, oh, we have a new person.
In her sword.
Okay. I don't know that person, but she's now holding the paddle, so she will be. The paddle is to let you know when you're coming close to your time being up. When you have 15 seconds left in your statement, the paddle will turn to yellow. When your time is up, the paddle will turn to red. When you see the red paddle, you can finish your sentence. You don't have to stop mid-sentence. Finish the sentence you're on, but do not start another one. Okay? That will keep us on time and give us a chance to get through, as many chances as possible. Before we go, do any of the candidates have any questions? Okay, we'll start with the opening statements then. I'm just going to go in alphabetical order, and when we get to closing statements, we'll go in reverse alphabetical order. So the first opening statement will be by Liz Barrett.
It has always been lucky to be early in the alphabet. I wanted to say thank you. This is a tremendous turnout, so thank you for spending time on Wednesday night learning about Board of Education candidates. I wanted to thank the North County Democrats. I also wanted to thank the Women's Democratic League for hosting and putting this together, and certainly the Vermont Library. I was thinking a lot about an opening statement, and I am running for education, running for Board of Education in 2018 for the very same reason that I ran in 2014, which is I believe in public education. I am the proud product of public education. I am a Frederick County Public Schools graduate from many, many years ago now. And when it was time for my own kids to go to school, I wanted them to go to Frederick County Public Schools, so I am almost out of pride. Those are frankly my most important points. It has been an honor, it has been a privilege, it has been a challenge to be on the Board of Education in Frederick County. And I believe in celebrating our school system, but I also believe in having the hard conversations we need in Frederick County to continue to improve in our school system. And we definitely need that yellow and red paddle.
When you hear that bell, you're done.
Good luck, everybody.
Next, Addison Hatter.
Good evening. My name is Addison Hatter, and I'd like to begin by thanking the Women's Democratic League, the Northern Frederick County Democrats, as well as everyone who came out this evening to learn more about your Board of Education candidates. I've had the privilege in the past couple of years to really have the opportunity to serve in many ways the Frederick County Public Schools System. I have volunteered numerous hours with our kindergarten students. I am the coordinator for a middle school science fair. I coach a girls' youth basketball team, and I currently serve as the secretary on the Citizens Advisory Council Subcommittee to the Board of Education. And in all that experience, I've really gotten the opportunity to speak to students and hear some of the concerns that they have. And I know that some of those concerns they share are some of the similar ones that I share regarding the testing culture and school safety. So I really hope to have the opportunity, if I earn your vote in June and November, to have the opportunity to work on the Board of Education next year to try to solve some of those problems. Liz, you were right.
But you didn't get the bell. Next, Jay Mason.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Appreciate the Northern Dems and the Women's Democratic League for hosting. Thank you all for coming. I have four main reasons why I want to be on the Board of Education. Three of them are my children, a ninth grader, a first grader, and a kindergarten. I want to know that they are getting the best possible education that we have to offer. I am a product of Frederick County Public Schools. I appreciate everything our Public Schools does for our children. And my fourth reason is my personal path that it took me to get here. From start of college to graduation was 17 years. I want to make sure that every kid graduates high school with a plan. Go to a trade school, go to college, go get a job. If you go get a job, just make sure you're on some kind of path to try to get into a management position. But when you graduate high school, I want all our kids to make sure that they have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. April Miller.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for hosting. It's an honor to be here, and it has been an honor to serve on the Frederick County Board of Education for the past two terms, and I am seeking support to continue to be that voice for parents and students in the school system. I envision schools as the heart of the community, places that inspire and equip and encourage each and every student to seek knowledge, acquire skills, gain experiences that enable them to find their own unique path in becoming an integral part of the community. Each child deserves an education that does not put limits on their potential, and that is incredibly important to me. I have a recent FCPS graduate who graduated last year. She's currently at Mount St. Mary's, and I have two students that are currently in the schools. And when you live the decisions that the Board of Education makes, you truly know how important each and every decision is, as is each and every child, and that's why I continue to want to be the voice for the families and for the community and for each of those students.
Thank you. Camden Rayner.
Good evening, and thanks again to the Women's Democratic League and the North Frederick County Democrats for hosting us this evening. I'll just start a little bit about me, because I don't have the same recognition as some people up here. My name is Camden Rayner. I was born here in Frederick County in 1998. I attended Wolfsoyl Elementary, Middletown Middle, Middletown High, where I graduated in 2016. I am currently a junior at the University of Maryland College Park, where I'm an economics and history double major. I'm running for the Board because I think we need normal, average citizens of our community serving in public office, and I believe I'm one of those. I believe in four quick things: fair staff compensation, equitable school construction and renovation, promoting STEAM education, and supporting our community schools. I'm looking forward to discussing the issues with you tonight, and I look forward to having a fruitful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Masai Traubman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Masai Traubman, and I am running for Board of Education as a father of two students. Both students are honor students, and one student is an honor student at FCPS, the other student was a Magnus student. And I am a tutor-mentor for the last four years at North Frederick Elementary, working with kids every month to help them feel, have higher self-esteem, to help them, to help them learn and read to them, so that they can see a model that looks like them that values education. My four reasons for running for the Board are: one, I want to increase FCPS staff diversity; two, I want to ensure safety and security of the staff and students through increased education on how we handle threat situations; and the third is I want to increase information technology and vocational learning for our students, so they have choices after they graduate, so they can work, be an entrepreneur. Thank you.
Kim Williams.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Kim Williams, and I am running for the Board of Education because I would like to see every child in Frederick County Public Schools receive a quality education regardless of where they're headed in life, whether they're going to go to college or not, prepare them for either a trade school or some kind of vocation where they could make a good living for themselves. I am the mother of three grown children that have been products of Frederick County Public Schools, and they've done well in life, and I want that for other people's kids. I have over 30 years of volunteering in Frederick County Public Schools as well as Montgomery County. I just was in the classroom, in the gym, in the cafeteria, wherever they needed me so much, that people thought I worked there. She's giving me the paddle, but, and also would like to thank the Democrats, the Northern Democrats in Vermont, and thank you, all of you, for coming out.
Thank you. Karen Yoho.
Good evening. I'm Karen Yoho. I'll reiterate what everyone said, thank you for coming. It's really good to have an audience to talk to. It's nice to know there are people that care about Board of Education, and thank you to the groups for hosting. I'm a 25-year teacher with Frederick County, about to retire July 1. All three of my children went through Frederick County Public Schools. I went to public schools in various places, my parents did, my husband did. We are products, and I do believe firmly in the public school system. I have a 25-year career, but I've been an advocate for education for at least 37 years when I joined the PTA when my son was in kindergarten. I was a three-time PTA president. You learn a lot, in fact, more as a PTA president, about how the school runs, because when you're a teacher, you're in the classroom, and you're a little bit isolated. But I'd like to see that I could bridge that gap between what really goes on in the classroom every day and the decisions that are made. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Brad Young.
Good evening. I'd also like to echo my thanks to our host this evening. I'd also like to thank the fine, quality group of candidates that have put their neck on the line to run for the Board of Education, because it is an extremely important job. Why am I running and why have I run in the past? I have a deep passion for education. I was born to elementary school teachers. I've spent a lot of my life dedicated to education, from teaching at Mount St. Mary's the past 16 years, 15 years on the Board of Frederick Community College, the State Board of Community College Trustees, the National Board, seven years on the University of Shady Grove, and my last eight years on FCPS. My background is I'm a financial planner, and I believe I bring a unique perspective, a financial experience to the Board that's necessary to be balanced with the educational needs. But most importantly, it's for the kids. I have two grandkids now that will be going through Frederick County Public Schools, and I want to make sure that it continues to be the great school system that it has been for myself and my family.
Thank you, candidates, for those introductions. We'll now get into the questions section of the program, and again, you have three questions to answer, just so don't feel you have to answer everyone. To make sure if there's one you really want, don't let it go, because you want to kind of hold until the end. The first question covers, I'm sorry.
How many are you asking?
Well, it's kind of with the time. We came up with, I think there's about 12, but then I made a bunch of extras just in case. I'm a teacher, I overplay. I don't like that time, but certainly, the forum goes till 8:30, so by quarter after, I will stop the questions. Keep that in mind. The first question really covers all the topics that we sent out to you, and the question is, what do you see as the primary responsibilities of the Board in regards to Frederick County Public Schools? And then, within that, what is the appropriate role of a Board of Education member? Does anyone want to take that question?
I'd be happy.
Don't feel ya. It's two minutes. Yes.
What's the role of the Board of Education? Our primary role is oversight, supervision of the school system. Our number-one employee is our superintendent. We have an outstanding superintendent, Dr. Terry Albin. I was very pleased to be on the committee that selected her as our superintendent eight years ago. So we have oversight of the superintendent. The other major responsibility that we have is for setting policy, and so the policies that we set echo what happens within the school system. In my eight years on the Board, we've taken some pretty courageous stands on policies, one being transgender bathroom policy, Policy 443. We are the only school system in the state of Maryland that has taken a stand and issued a policy on this, and I'm very proud that we've done that, because our schools have to be welcoming and affirming to everyone that comes through the doors, and it's the Board that sets the tone that goes throughout the school system. So the Board has a responsibility to make policies that get implemented throughout the school system. Now, when they don't go exactly the way that we think they should, then we have supervisory oversight to go back and say, no, that's not what we intended for that. This year, we also adopted an equity policy, again, to make sure that we have equality through our school system and facilities, how people are treated in any way possible that every student should be getting the same type of experience. I know Northern Frederick County, I hear a lot about our new school buildings recently have been in the Frederick City area and going down towards Urbana and Monrovia. I, as a Board member, have paid attention to Northern Frederick County as well to make sure that we're giving the same kinds of resources, whether you're in North County, South County, east or west, and that's what the Board has a responsibility to do, to be good stewards of the money and get the most we can for every student throughout our county.
Ms. Barrett.
Thanks. I'm really glad to answer this question. I had to think about it for a second, so I was glad that Mr. Young went first. The role of the Board of Education, one important thing is the fiduciary responsibility. Our budget this year, our anticipated budget, is over $615 million. There are 42,000-plus kids in our school system. There are over 6,000 employees. There is not a job that I have ever done in my life that requires more thoughtfulness, more careful consideration, and more responsibility for this term stakeholders, right? We have kids, we have parents, we have taxpayers, we have folks who are conservative, we have folks who are progressive. Frederick County is as diverse as can be, and we have a growing diversity. We now are welcoming more English-language learners than ever before. It is keeping a finger on this community, which is impossible, because you have to reach out. In my term on the Board of Education, I have reached out and I have met over 200, personally had coffee, or breakfast, or telephone conversation with over 200 parents, teachers, and students. Those personal connections are absolutely crucial to the role of a Board member, because we can sit there for 94 hours every other Wednesday, and we can talk to each other. Collegial relationships with Board members are important, but those community connections are essential. And that last piece about collegial atmosphere and collaboration, our Board meetings do get challenging. We have tough conversations, because these are tough issues. But at the end of the day, you can't roll onto a Board of Education and expect to hammer along your own agenda, because you are elected with other people who are elected by community members. They have been elected the same way you have, and so you have to work to foster relationships. And I've worked really hard to do that, and look forward to doing that again. Thanks.
Thank you. The next question is on the topic of budget, which you just brought up, and the question is, FCPS has an over $600 million operating budget. Crafting and improving this budget is one of the main responsibilities of the Board of Education. What are your priorities for the VOE budget, and how will you approach the issue of creating both a sustainable and a budget that meets the needs of all students? Mr. Hatter.
So, you know, I'm really glad that the past week here, I've got an opportunity to attend two events that kind of could help me in the direction of answering this question. Last Monday, I got the opportunity to attend the Decoding Dyslexia Monthly Meeting that they hold, and yesterday, I got the opportunity to visit our Career and Technology Center. So starting with decoding dyslexia, there's a very large achievement gap that currently exists between our special education students, those with the 504s, the IUPs, and the rest of our students. If we're looking at, say, the PARC testing statistics as an example, like the state of Maryland, the average is 41% pass rate for the PARC test. Our special education students are passing at a 7.1% rate. So there's clearly a huge gap that exists there, and I kind of was appalled to hear from them that there are certain aspects of the system that really aren't, that they really aren't being able to take advantage of. The way that they're identifying dyslexia, for example, using these RAN tests, this test we're using for these pre-K children, is not indicative of that future disability potential. So we really have to start, so looking at that area, we really have to work to ensure that they are getting the funding that they need. Right now, we get $65 million in special education out of that $600 million. It really does sound like a lot, but you have to remember that the student-teacher ratios and what each of those students need is not the same as the rest of our students. So we really have to work to make sure that they get what they need. Yesterday, I got the opportunity to visit the CTC, which I know is a great opportunity, not only for the students that may not be college-bound, but it's also a good opportunity for students that even are college-bound, because a lot of these programs give them the opportunity to earn college credit through these programs. So there's, in short, there were 704 applications they said they got for next year, and they can only set 380. And there's plenty of very exceptional students in that group, so they clearly need the additional funding to help provide more students to be in that building, so more students can take advantage of those programs. Thank you.
Mr. Mason.
When we talk about our budget, you know, the biggest priority in our budget is our teachers, and they are our first line of defense, if you want to call it. They are molding our product, which is our students. They are taking care of everything that we put in our schools. When we have a teaching staff that is diverse, then we are going to be taking care of our population, which is extremely diverse, over 70-plus languages in our school system. So when we have that much diversity in our school system, we need to make sure that we're having a teaching staff that is going to be able to relate to a majority of those students. I'm pretty sure we can't cover them all, but we've got to be able to relate to each and every student in our classroom, and we can't do that without a diverse teaching staff or administrative staff. We have a diverse school support staff, but that's not who's on our front lines, that's not who's in the classroom, that's not who's teaching our children. We need to make sure that the teachers are getting the resources they need. We need to make sure they're getting the salaries they need. We need to make sure that if they're going to work in Frederick County, they need to be able to live in Frederick County. They need a living wage. So the one, the biggest priority of our budget is our staff. So we've got to make sure that if we're going to be putting our children in public schools, that we're providing the best examples for them, and that's our teachers. And, you know, to be able to stand up there and not see a teacher that looks like you, it can hurt students. It can cause them to not want to learn. So students need to be able to walk into a building and have a conversation with somebody that's going to understand them, and that means having a diverse staff.
Mr. Traubman.
Yes. Regarding the budget, one of my biggest focuses is on the fact that Frederick County is growing in population, so building renovations and building, create, building new facilities to support these new students is a top priority. And in the use of portable classrooms, I see them as a security vulnerability, because people can walk right up to those portables without any facility or any containment to keep them away from getting to our kids. So decreasing the use of portables, renovating as planned in this capital, the capital budget, are two of the main things that I think we need to focus in on, because one relates to, removing portables relates to safety. I also believe in expanding on the CTC budget because of the work that it does with preparing kids who may not be directly college-bound, as well as giving college credit. I totally agree. But I also want to extend information technology into the elementary school, learn, more learning of information technology, and the LINKS program into other high schools. I've been in IT for 20 years, and there is a tremendous demand in high-paying jobs if you get certified, whether you have a college degree or not. And I'd like to see our students empowered with opportunities to either go to school, get a good job, or even go into a high-demand area and be an entrepreneur.
Thank you. Ms. Yoho.
In the budget, the biggest portion, obviously, is for salaries. And anybody who's running for the school board, if you've been paying attention for a lot of years, the big line used to be, I'm going to get in there, I'm going to find the waste, I'm going to cut the budget. Congratulations to the Board members sitting up here. I don't hear people saying that anymore, because that was not a reality. The biggest portion goes, is fixed, and little you can do about it. So I'm definitely in favor of continuing the expansion of the salary resource pool. Our teachers were really at the bottom in the state, and that's moving us up a little to help keep us more competitive. That'll start to help address the diversity, only the beginning of it. I would love to see class size reduced. You can't have both, and so I like to see what they're doing, what they started with, media specialists that are in some of the smaller schools. I know the smaller schools don't love this, but they might send them to a school like Centerville that has a huge population. And that's actually being equitable. It's not hurting the kids in the smaller school, it's helping the kids in the bigger schools, and it's addressing staffing in a revenue-neutral way. I'm a big fan of the CTC. My husband's an electrical contractor. I help him, I work for him part-time. We cannot hire people. We've kind of given up. And I hear this from trades all over the place. So opportunities for students to get out of school with a well-paying job are something we need to look at. So budget is important. Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
The budget reflects the priorities of your Board, and I was very happy this year that we, as a Board, actually came together, and the superintendent recommends our budget, and that we, as a Board, came together and added what we thought were the priorities before that budget was sent over to the council and to the county executive. And it was a very collaborative process. And so now, the hard work will begin, because when we get the funding back and find out what actual funding we get, that's where the budget realities take place. And what I've been also proud of is that the waste, the fraud, the issue, that comes from transparent budgeting and fiscal accountability, and that's what we've provided. We have provided opportunities for community feedback, we have opportunities for community input, and that's what the Board has been about, the responsiveness and openness and transparency with the community. And that just did not happen overnight. So as your budget does reflect your priorities, some of the priorities that we have as a Board of Education, one is the safety and security, the training of SROs. Our SROs are some of our biggest assets. That does not come out of our budget, it does come out of the sheriff's budget, but we have been advocating for that as well, and there's also some legislation that is coming our way about that. The other is the security vestibules, and we are also working on a visitor identification process that will make that safer for students, as far as tracking the visitors that are coming in and comparing them against some of the national watch lists. The other is the relationships that we build in the community with our mental health providers, the relationships for our students, being able to hire more social workers that can provide therapy to our students. Our students are coming in with more behavior challenges, with more mental health, with more emotional challenges than we have ever seen before. Oh, no, I'm yellow. Dyslexia is a huge issue that we are working on, and we're building strategies in the budget to help deal with that. And then also, we need the scientifically-based reading program that needs to be overhauled, and our special ed. We are working to streamline some of those processes, because we need to retain and we need to help some of those teachers. And then the other thing is the staffing. The staffing is critical, and it's not just the teachers. Our health and benefits and salaries are almost 90% of our budget, doesn't leave a lot for discretionary, so we need to continue to staff our schools appropriately, all schools, even small ones.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
There's a whirlwind. Thank you. My two biggest priorities are staff compensation and benefits, along with making sure we're correctly prioritizing school construction, and that's a combination of CPS, the state, and the county that I think it's important to talk about. I'm the product of two elementary school teachers. I remember, I was little, but I remember the recession well, and we essentially had a decade of lost earning power among FCPS employees. It's tough to dig out of the hole that we're in. But for me, we have a moral imperative to do our very best to compensate our employees for the hard work they do, not just our teachers, our support staff, our administrators. There is, if we pay teachers and staff the amount of overtime they put in, we'd be bankrupt as a system. The incredible amount of work they do, it deserves our attention and our support. At the same time, Frederick County has somewhat of a twin problem. So we have the southeastern portion of the county growing incredibly quickly. You have people like me, who live out toward the Meyersville, the entire northern half of the county, frankly, that relative to that portion of the county, it's stagnating, enrollment is declining, relatively speaking. And you end up with this problem of, well, do we prioritize building new schools, do we renovate current ones? And for me, trying to find that balance is incredibly important. We have schools, particularly in the Katton Theater pattern, it's been 40, 50, in St. Louis's case, 60 years, and they've had a major renovation or addition. And for me, that's something to make And for me, that's something, to making sure we have a fiduciary responsibility to serve all ten feeder patterns in our school system, make sure our students, you know, being in a portable, I would say it's just as bad as being in a building that hasn't been renovated in sixty years. It's quite a challenge for our students and our staff, and making sure we are doing our absolute level best to distribute those funds equitably and fairly across our county. Thank you.
Would anyone like to use one of their rebuttals at this point? We'll move on then. The next question is on the topic of respecting diversity, and it touches on the answer that was given. Currently, the F C P S teaching staff does not reflect the growing diversity of the F C P S students. Should having a more diverse teaching staff be a focused goal of our school system? And if so, what should F C P S do to attract more minority teachers? If you don't think it's an important goal, why do you think it's not an important goal? Mr. Traub?
Yeah, this is one of my pillars of my campaign, and it's based on, I'm a son of a teacher, and seeing my mom teach has motivated me to go into the schools and help. Even though I'm a businessman, I T, I spend a lot of time in the schools, serving, because I want to educate like I saw my mom educate as a, as an African-American woman. So, the reflection that we give as a diverse population, that we give to the kids by being in the schools, will motivate the kids to go into education. So, there's a bigger strategy here with showing the kids that there, that there, that there's a diverse group of candidates out there who want to be, who want to educate them. I think it's important, and I think we can get it done through the recruitment process, like going to recruit from H B C U's, historically black colleges and universities, making that a target, going to some of the Hispanic organizations, going to some of the, like dislike, special education candidates, or having a specialized recruiter that can go get other, like specialized candidates. But we have to make it a focus so that we can empower our students by letting them see themselves. That's something that my son would say, "They don't see me," and that's something that I always want to empower him, that yes, you're important, and when you look out, you can see yourself in leadership.
Someone else want to answer this question? Ms. Barrett?
So, this, this diversity piece is actually one of the board's strategic priorities. So, I joined the board in two thousand and fourteen as the board was finalizing the strategic plan, and I played a role in finalizing the strategic plan, and I'm, as part of our, as part of our recruitment, as part of our staffing strategy, building diversity among staff members is crucial. There are a lot of reasons why it hasn't happened, and a lot of people have different theories. We don't have enough money to attract teachers of color who are in demand all over the United States. Frederick County is not welcoming. You know, Frederick County may have this reputation where folks who speak different language, folks who speak different languages are teachers of color, or teachers with disabilities are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning teachers don't want to come here. But, we're working to change that. So, we have developed a more competitive salary scale, and that required some really, really tough decision-making to prioritize something as difficult as a class size increase to get us on the way to compensating teachers. Our board, and me in particular, have been extremely challenging with our human resources staff to make sure that we are doing modern, data-driven recruiting. So, that doesn't mean going to teacher fairs, it does mean targeting H B C U's, historically black colleges and universities and other methods. And our board has done policymaking, crucial vital policymaking to make our school system appear welcoming to all. So, that's policy four-four-three, the welcoming and affirming policy for transgender and gender non-conforming folks. That policy is not just important for kids who are transgender or gender non-conforming. What it does is it says our school is welcoming and affirming for all. So, we are moving past this tolerance conversation and saying, "Come to Frederick County, teachers, staff, and students, you're all welcome here." We need to do more.
Ms. Yeho?
Yes, thank you. So, I agree with Liz and Asai. I think we're moving forward very slowly. I think we need to not give as much lip service to wanting to do this and really make an effort to get out there and do it. My kids have, they were raised here, Frederick County, gone through the schools. T J was diverse, I have two kids at T J, one at Frederick High, which was very diverse. I would really like to see us recruiting at some of the H C B U's, you know, the historically black colleges and universities, going out and getting Indian teachers, getting teachers, administrators. People want to see somebody that looks like them. I'm from the deep south, so when I was little, there was, yeah, everything, my world was a black world. I was in a segregated situation where we only went to the colored bathrooms and had the colored teachers, and the white kids went to the white kids. And so, it was, so it's, but it's different now. Dr. King fought for just exactly what we're talking about, and you look around, it's all colors of people. And, you know, you look at these people that are here, at this table, I mean, this is beautiful. I have been to so many meetings and, you know, fairs, I've gone to the Mexicans, my friend says, "Hey, come over to my Indian celebration." That's, that's what it should be like. There's more things that brings us together than separates us. But in the school system, it doesn't seem to, it doesn't flow like that. So, I'd like to see less lip service and more reaching out to where these other folks are and say, "Hey, we value you as a teacher, come to our schools, teach our children." That's what I'd like to see.
Mr. Mason?
It starts with leadership, and for us to attract a diverse student, or teacher population, they need to look at the leadership in Frederick County and see a diverse population in our elected officials. That's why you see a diverse population sitting up here that want to be elected. If they're not going to see the leadership, a diverse population, they're not going to come. You know, they need, if the teacher's going to come here, they need to know that it starts from the top. And if it's not at the top, they have no motivation to want to get to the top. So, when you start a job, you ultimately want to get to the top, you want to become a manager, an owner, C E O. So, if you have no path, at least you don't think you have a path, why would you come? Why would you join a company as a minority if you don't think you're going to get into a leadership role? So, why would you come to Frederick County and be a teacher as a minority if you don't see it on our board? That's why I want to get elected. I want to be able to sit there on the board and have somebody come from Howard County, Montgomery County, and say, "Look, I have the potential. We need a cabinet for our superintendent to be diverse, to have minorities on it," so that somebody that's starting as a teacher that knows in twenty years they have the potential to be in a leadership role in the school system. If you don't see it at the top, you're not going to want to start at the bottom.
Would anyone like to use a rebuttal on this topic?
Yeah, I had a rebuttal for Liz about Frederick County being, not being welcoming, welcoming in the past. I feel like it is, like my two kids that we raise here and the activities we've done, like going to the Y M C A is very family-oriented. I mean, it's been a lot of love, I mean, we love it from a family-oriented perspective, and we, we ask people to come here. So, I just think that the institution of F C P S needs to transform. I think Frederick County, at least the city, has been welcoming to me.
All right, the next topic is on school safety. Tragically, school violence, including mass shootings, have become all too common, including a school shooting in Maryland and a potentially dangerous situation right here in Vermont. What are your views on enhancing school safety from the most extreme of the school shootings to other violent actions that might occur in school? And how do we make sure that every student in Frederick County goes to a safe school? And if you'd like, what roles should school resource officers play in ensuring school safety? Mr. Head?
Well, first and foremost, I'll just start with what I'm not for, since I know that a lot of people, a lot of my colleagues know, have been very supportive of metal detectors. And my short reason why I'm against that is that our Frederick High public schools, we have fifty entrances and exits within, on average, in most of our schools. We would be able to put metal detectors in maybe the front door. It's unrealistic to think that students are going to come through those every time they do, and even if they did during the school day, we have so many community groups that are using these schools after hours that, and, you know, I've been in these schools before for some of these events, and you pretty much can wander wherever you want within that school, so. So, in short, that's why I'm going to be against metal detectors. But speaking to the question about the S R O program, and I know April mentioned this, but I do strongly support enhancing and expanding our S R O program as it stands now, because as we have it now, we have one resource officer for every feeder pattern, and at that point, that's just simply not enough. I mean, we've got circumstances where if someone's going to choose to do something, they're going to do it when that S R O is off duty, when they're at another school, and they're choosing these times to do it intentionally. Columbine, they chose to do it when the S R O was at lunch. Down at Parkland, they chose to do it at the end of the day because he was getting off shift. Great Mills did it first thing in the morning when he was just entering the building. So, we really have to work to, I know, there definitely has to be collaboration with the Frederick High Sheriff's Office to determine how exactly we would pay for that, because as it stands now, they do provide that to us, that's part of the sheriff's budget, and that's provided to us as an in-kind service. So, we may have to help front some of that bill, we would have to work that out with them, but we definitely need to work on expanding that program to ensure that every school in the system has a resource officer in it for every minute of every school.
Ms. Yeho?
From the standpoint of a teacher in the school, I feel safe when I go to school, and so do my students' elementary. I'm sure middle and high school kids probably talk more about it. I think the school system has been responsible, they are constantly reevaluating what we do. I know that they're looking at, right now, they're putting in the vestibules for the schools that it can be done easily. Things take time, it is expensive, and mostly, they just take time, and some of the schools are not easy to do. They weren't built at a time where these were things that we thought of. So, I think the school system will keep working in the right direction to make sure our schools are as safe as can be. Some of the extreme measures would be too costly, and I don't want to downplay this, but students are still about a hundred times safer in the school than they are, say, in a car. So, do we spend all this money that we don't have to address an issue that may not, or solution that may not address the issue? I think not. Not for our teachers, but I don't want to go there. I would like to look at root causes. Why do these kids do these things? I was at my granddaughter's school volunteering, and there was a book, I was sharpening about a hundred pencils for the teacher, and I was looking at these books that the staff is reading called The Formative Five. And the one that stuck with me was grit. And I'd just been talking to a teammate about how we need to teach students resilience. Let's find out, let's get more counselors, let's get the ratio of psychologists down, and let's address some of the root causes and policy four-four-three of making our students and everyone feel safe and welcome, and I think we'll start to address some of those other issues.
Mr. Younghead, does it have anything for it?
Start by saying this is not a school problem, this is a community problem, and it won't be fixed by the school system. We can put our states in almost a military lockdown situation, and bad things can still happen. That's what Ms. Yeho had, Yeho said we have to look at the root. This past Friday night, I went to a presentation called Stand For The Silent, and this was a gentleman from Oklahoma whose son took his own life a number of years ago from a bullying situation. He took the route of taking his own life, others take the route of taking others, and we never know why that might be. But many of these situations evolve back to either mental health issues, bullying issues, or issues where somebody feels they have to take a drastic action. As a board member, I put a top priority on increasing our mental health services. I do think our S R Os play a great role in our school system. We could put three in every school if you could even hire them. Like, if we did that, it would be a tough time for the sheriffs or local police departments to hire that many officers, but it still wouldn't make our schools completely safe. The situation that happened last year here in Catocton was actually a daughter of somebody that I graduated high school with. It was a very unfortunate situation, but it was the dad that helped solve the problem and make sure that it didn't actually happen. We're actually having a seminar here in June at Catocton High School. The principal of Columbine High School will be the feature speaker to talk to communities of how to deal with situations when they happen. We have to continue to put resources and make sure that kids that have problems feel like they're not being heard, feel like they're not being loved, know that there is somebody that's there for them. The policies that we set help do that, but more importantly, the resources that we provide on a day-to-day basis are what helps make the difference so some of these things won't happen in the future.
Mr. Traub, this is your third answer.
Okay, so, thank you. Yeah, I attended at T J High yesterday, the security and safety seminar by Frederick County Public School by emergency manager, and, and he went over a full, like a portfolio of measures and tools that they're, that they're going to have in place, such as panic buttons, like cameras, they're going to have the containment areas, the vestibules, making sure those are in every school, the resource officers' utilization. One thing that stood out is the fact that we talked about education. It's a big push to educate the teachers, but, but everyone was saying, "We need to educate the students." The students need to be, to understand this avoid, deny, and defend methodology as well. I asked my daughter, she's in elementary school, I said, "Avoid, what do you do?" I said, "What do you run to?" She said, "I don't know," you know? She's like, "I asked my girlfriend, 'What we going to do if they come up in here?'" Excuse my vernacular, but, and she said, and I said, "Well, you should run to a tree or run to a location that they've identified." She said, "Well, they haven't done it yet, Daddy." We need education, all right? And I talked to, we talked about deny and how she should hide, I mean, go, go and try to get out of sight, things like that. But the students need education so that they can participate in, and try to defuse or try to save their, everyone's lives as well, if need be. So, that's my take.
Ms. Yeho?
Right, so, I was thinking, you know, every time I hear about another school shooting, my heart just sinks because it is just incredible to me that this is happening yet again, right? So, is there ever going to be a safe school? We never know when it's going to happen again. And to me, it just seems like the problem is systemic. It's not just that someone has a gun, wants to shoot and kill and harm people for no reason. They have, the mental issue comes into play, right? Obviously, there's something wrong with someone that wants to come into us anywhere, church, school, whatever, and shoot up innocent people. I believe the, there has to be lots of things, obviously, education is one, teaching people what to do, when to do it, but I, I think we're not going to be able to safely lock everybody down. I mean, we won't, we won't have the resources to do that. You know, the S R Os, like Brad said, there's, we won't be able to hire enough. Sheriff's Department, the police department, it's just, it's just incredibly sad. I was actually at Frederick High the night of that shooting, and it was so scary. Nobody knew what to do. We were just all running around frantic, we didn't, we, it just was chaotic, but it just was so incredibly sad. People from the outside coming into a school, shooting, blah, 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 and it just leaves this very hard, sad feeling, like these two young kids, two, three, whatever the number was, they felt like they had to come to this point to do this, you know? They needed other avenues to kind of steer them in other directions. So, it's not just the guns, but obviously, who needs, you know, the assault rifles the kids have been using, it's just, it's just very sad. I constantly think about what to do. I'm not getting a paddle, I'm sorry.
You're fine, don't worry.
I'm sorry, but it's, yeah, I'm done.
Does anybody else want to answer this question or rebuttal to this question? Mr. Youngs?
Just a quick rebuttal. As I, the avoid, deny, defend training was supposed to be done in all schools. I know, I've talked to a number of schools where it has been. It is a very difficult subject at the elementary level, and so, it's talked about in multiple areas. I can tell you, I talked to my class at the Mount and looking at college kids saying, "If something happens, who..." if something happens, who's shutting the door? Are we breaking the window, and are we jumping? They're difficult conversations to have. They're supposed to happen at your school, your child's school hasn't had it, let me know the school, and I'll make sure that they get it.
All right. The next question is on curriculum. All Maryland public schools are supposed to be focused on graduating students who are college and career ready. I think most of us know there's a lot of focus on college-ready, but do you think FCPS is doing enough in the area of career readiness and career training? And if not, what should FCPS be doing to grow our technical and career education programs? Mr. Hatter?
It's not a good chance to finish those comments I was making earlier about CTC. That paddle comes quick. Anyways, yes, yes, so yesterday I got the opportunity to go visit the Career and Technology Center we have. And again, they currently have about 775 students down there at the CTC right now, which, you know, represents roughly about, yeah, we have 40,000, it's like 2.5% of our students, but high school students, we have 13,000, so it's still about 7%. So that's a pretty good number of students that are going down there. But what I do like about this program so much is that it isn't like, for some counties, you'll sit down with a kid, student freshman year, and they kind of have to decide then and there, am I college-bound, or am I going to take more of a career path and use these four years to work for a career? The great thing about our programs that we have is that they not only earn college credits and professional accreditation for those programs, they have every door open to them. In fact, I was told yesterday that almost 70% of students from the CTC that go through those programs, they go on to post-secondary opportunities. So it's a great thing for us that we don't necessarily shut doors for those that are, that do wish to still pursue the college path. But for those that don't, that, those programs down there do, really. I mean, we have 21 programs down there that really help and cover a diverse area of technical skills, prepare them for the workforce, if that's the path they tend to work out towards. And I know that talking to our principal yesterday, that he said that a lot of them get numerous job offers once they complete some of the programs down there. The accreditations that we have in those programs are extremely well-recognized in the workforce. So, but again, as I said earlier, they had 704 applications this year, they're only going to be able to accept 380. They clearly have more than 380 students there that would be well-prepared for those programs. And a lot of that comes from the teacher staff models. They, for example, the health professionals' classrooms, they have to have one teacher for every eight students. So we really have to work to ensure that we have the correct number, that we can increase the number of staffs there, that we can increase their building capacities, and make sure that more students, and if students want to take advantage of those programs, that those students are able to take advantage, they're able to participate in those opportunities. Thank you.
And that was your third question. Anything else? Dr. Miller?
One of the things I've been most proud of is being, serving on as liaison for the Career and Tech Education Council. It is one of our most vibrant advisory councils that we have. They have industry-certified professionals that all work together to help mentor, to help facilitate our career students, our CTC, as well as the career technical education in the schools. That has been invaluable, and there's been a lot of work on, you know, it's not the typical VOTech. If you go over to CTC, it is absolutely amazing. The Biomed program is one of our most incredible and actually very appropriate to Frederick County. Another thing that we're working is with, working with AstraZeneca at Tuscorah High School, to be able to have a high school chain right into a professional career for these students, that then they can actually go on into the workforce and go on to college if they so choose. So my opinion is it shouldn't be career-ready or college-ready, it should be college and/or career-ready. You have to make sure they're able to do both. The price of college right now is getting astronomical for some families. Some of these certifications that these children, these students can earn, they are industry-certified. They start in their 10th or 11th grade year. They are absolutely amazing. They can get the A-plus certifications, they could get some of the cybersecurity certifications. They can go right into the workforce. So some of the things that we're doing, continuing to do our work-study program and expanding that, we have a lot of student internships and mentorship, mentorships, which I just had the pleasure of talking to several students who are taking advantage of, oh man, I'm getting yelled at again. We also have the LACE program at Frederick High, which is kind of revolutionizing how we do high school. We have the Youth Apprenticeship Program for, from the state that's coming down, that we have been piloting in Frederick County. So we have so many exciting things going on in career. One of the things I think we should do is offer all of the students an opportunity to take the ASVAP. The ASVAP is the military testing, and it can tell you so much more about other, I'm not usually an advocate for more testing, but that is actually something that can give you help on what career, what challenge, what you'd be best suited for. Sorry.
They'll be not talking now.
Yeah. You know what they got a rant on? You only got a rant on.
Sure, sure. There was a stat, some stats that I saw a few years ago, where we have some, many of our middle school students who are African-American are in Ameri-ed classes. When you look at the stats in 2015, 10% or lower were in honors class of African-American students. So when you start on a path in Ameri-ed class, once you get to high school, you're not going to try the advanced-level classes or the AP classes. So it's got to start in middle school to start motivating kids to try the honors class. If we give our kids the opportunity to do it, more times than not, they're going to prove that they can do it. We should put them there because we don't think they can. We should give them the opportunity to try the honors classes whenever possible. My daughter was supposed to be, should have been, in accelerated math class in the seventh grade. She's now in ninth grade. We were told no three times before they actually put her in the accelerated math class. There was never an opportunity for us to say, for the school system to say, well, how do we get her there? That came out of me and my wife. How do we get her there? How do we get her in accelerated math class? She was never put there until I had to ask for a meeting. And I don't think we're doing justification for our students if we're not pushing them to be in the honors-level classes. Recently, we had a kid come to our Rotary who was finishing high school with 22 credits, 22 credits. We have a dual enrollment program, which we should be utilizing. A kid on free and reduced meals can pay $151 to take an FCC class in high school. Their class costs $2,000 once they get out of high school. If they're not on free and reduced meals, it costs them $350. We have a great opportunity with our dual enrollment program to encourage kids to try college classes in high school, to know if they can do it once they get past high school. So I think we need to be pushing our kids more to try more upper-level classes and give the college classes a try.
I would rebuttal. Someone else have a wanting answer to the question? Go with Mr. Rader.
I just want to briefly, I'm the, I think, maybe Edison, the current college student here, sitting up here. And yeah, I'll confirm April, the costs are absolutely astronomical. I went to sign my student loan in July of 2016, and I just said I couldn't do it, and I decided to commute, so I'm down 270 every day to go to College Park. So I really, I feel our students' pain every day. If we're being very honest about our, the technical side and career readiness, I think there's stigma about it in our societies and our high schools. I don't know how to fix that. I think that's frankly a national issue, that FCP, I don't think it's anything FCPS is doing wrong, is what I'm saying. We have, we're fighting an uphill battle, encouraging students to take advantage of those wonderful and high-paying careers we offer. I just say, I don't think anybody here, of course, I support expanding our CTC whenever possible, it's a wonderful program. I have had the pleasure actually to see it, but I've had friends that I've heard it's absolutely wonderful what it offers there. But I will say, for our college-bound students as well, our online class, our virtual school, and our AP classes are tremendous resources for any student looking to find their way into a college classroom as well. I took AP courses online and in school, and I left high school 40 credits. I started as a sophomore in college. It's possible to get through college relatively debt-free. I'm not saying it's easy, but it's something we need to offer our students as, if you want to do this, there's a way to do it, there's FCC, the Mount. I think students have more options than they're often willing to give themselves. There's some sacrifice in the front end, and you can really come out, CTC, a college of a wonderful, high-paying career, and us really present those options to all our students who are in FCPs.
Just to be clear, is this a answer or a rebuttal?
This is an answer.
Answer. This is your third.
Yeah, I'll say there's no bigger supporter of CTC than my daughter. My oldest daughter in the eighth grade was struggling. I took her out to the open house at CTC. She found her love and passion, which was nursing. She went through the nursing program, got her GNA, and I was like, please, God, let her be able to get into the FCC program and have the grades to do that. She got in, graduated, went to work in the emergency department at Frederick Memorial Hospital, finished her bachelor's degree. I teach at the Mount, they started doing a master's in healthcare. She took that and graduated. Her total education out of pocket, I spent about $27,000. She's 29 years old and just was offered a job at over $110,000 as the charge nurse in the emergency department at Frederick Memorial Hospital. She now teaches clinicals at Frederick Community College. I can't say more good things about what our Career and Technology Center did for her, but they do so many other great things. There's a young lady out there that designed the seal for the Barack Obama Presidential Library at Frederick County CTC. There's a group of students that just won the Limberson MIT Award for coming up with a process to distill water in Ethiopia, and they're going over there to install that for a village that didn't have water. Four years ago, they developed a HIPAA roller, which allowed for villages to go to their water source, Bill will bring it back to their village and not have to carry it and go many, many times. So we have that. We just broke down on our newest house, that our students build a house every year. They do everything from the carpentry to working on the electrical, plumbing, landscape, all those programs are out there. There's so many great things. If you've never had an opportunity, every fall, there's an open house. Over 1,000 people attend that every year, and you'll see some of the incredible things. I would like to see us expand even further. It has been a budgetary issue, and we're working with private partnerships in order to be able to expand that in the future.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with all of the candidates up here as far as CTC. I'd like to see it, being an information technology professional for 20 years, I'd like to see it expand in the IT arena, given the demand for cybersecurity, database management, and cloud computing. There's a lot of technologies that are open-source that wouldn't cost the county much money to implement, and for us to focus in on partnership and volunteerism of the corporations. Like, my small business, we have consultants who specialize, we'll gladly come over and help build a lab and provide training to the students so that they have real-world experience, so that they'll be ready for the jobs when those requisitions come out. The big thing that I'm promoting is certifications in Python, Java, some of these high-demand technologies. I'd like to expand that. I talked with the CTC principal, and he said, Messiah. I said, "Do you guys have database management, like Oracle and all?" He said, "We were going to expand, but," he said, "we need more funding so that we can have more space." And I was like, "Man, maybe we can partner. I can help you. We can write grants to the Bill Gates Foundation. We need to do a lot more of that. I'm a proposal writer, grant writer." That's, those are the type of things I would do to expand the scope of the technologies that we're delivering to our students so that they could be in the high-demand technologies.
Right. Somebody else want to?
Yeah, so I-
So this is just to be clear, I'm sorry, this is a rebuttal.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So I would like to say that, yes, CTC, I sing its praises. Unfortunately, I had a student, my youngest son, just a darling, darling person, I thought it was great, he didn't think it was great because he just was that mindset. We know reality, wait a minute, I'm yellow already?
30 seconds.
Oh! Anyway, I thought it was, I thought it was wonderful. He didn't think it was wonderful, so now he's 20 years old, and he wants to be in charge of his life, and he's still trying to figure some, God.
Ms. Rader?
So, real quick here, I appreciate the idea of college and career readiness, but I'm sort of tired of hearing about it sometimes. It is not the only goal for public education. I realize that all of our kids all need to be able to find jobs, and they need to be able to pursue higher education or the military if they wish, but, you know, we are, we are putting a tremendous amount of our pressure on our kids at younger and younger ages to figure it all out, and the push and the testing, and balancing all of the stuff that they need to do in the future with also having time to read literature, and listen to music, and play in an orchestra, and do drama, and participate in sports. That is my second bell.
The next question is on both school safety and respecting diversity. Bullying, both in school and unfortunately now on the internet, both while kids are in school and when they're outside of school, can have often devastating effects on the students on the receiving end of that. It can damage their ability to learn. How can FCPS improve how it tracks and responds to bullying, and what can the school system do better to prevent bullying? Last two very bad ones. Lesson one wants to stop.
Don't clue off a 30-second response to it?
You want to rebuttal?
I can squeeze it in 30 seconds.
I'm going to make an executive decision. You can use one of your, it did say at the discretion of the moderator.
Okay. I'll see if I squeeze this in in 30 seconds. So to try to prevent bullying, we got to make sure that people understand that everyone comes from very diverse backgrounds. So for example, Dr. Feng Shanghe and Steven Chu are two very important and prominent agents of history, and I guarantee you that very few people do want to just remember who they are. See, and who in this room knows who Albert Einstein and Abraham Lincoln are? See, so we have to make sure that everyone understands the different backgrounds that everyone comes from, and understands that every different group, and every racial group, and every ethnicity, and people from all walks of life can contribute in many different ways and all have their own. Man, you're really positioning us.
Exactly, that's what happened to me.
Ms. Yeho and then Dr. Miller.
So since we're just rebutting, the whole bullying issue is, a few years ago, morning teacher and I, because it's on halftime, we had some students, and we would get calls from parents, two students in our class, he's bullying, he's bullying, they were both boys. These were not bullies. So what they would do is don't be around them if they were in a bad mood, because you were going to get said something not very nice or be treated not very nicely. But they weren't classical bullies. So I think we also need to educate the parents and the community what true bullying is, and then work to stop it. That was what I would add to that.
One, I want to add incident reports and not just bullying reports. As Ms. Yeho had said, some of the incidents aren't bullying. The other thing is, I want to do a student advisory council where the students are actually taking more control of what anti-bullying, because sometimes we as adults absolutely do not understand what these kids are going through anymore. So I think student leadership needs to be very important, and the most important thing we need to do as adults is stop doing it. Stop doing to each, to each other, start listening to each other, start respecting each other, and start taking the time to understand one another and agree to disagree and move on.
All right. The next question is another funding and budget question. What is your familiarity with the master plan for school construction? And would you make any changes to the current master plan and explain those changes and why you want to make them?
Can I use 30 seconds?
Have my hand up.
This is my last one.
You can then rebuttal.
This is like my, my bread and butter for my campaign. I've read the entire facilities' master plan and the capital improvement plan for Frederick County and FCPS. It's a very hard, you have hard decisions to make, because for me, I'm incredibly worried about our rural communities, and for that matter, in Frederick City, of incredibly old schools that desperately need something done. We do not have the money to constantly, whatever we need to do, and build the new schools. I don't know what to tell new communities, you move up here expecting, we've got a wonderful school system here in Frederick County, and you want this beautiful building. Centerville's a great example of that. You move into Urbana, I mean, massive overcrowding. But I grew up, I went to Wolfsville, Myersville, and I understand the problem where you don't necessarily want to renovate a school that's significantly under capacity, because then you're wasting, I understand that figures, you're wasting seats. So for me, I know it's not popular, I would be open to shifting some things around in terms of priorities for school construction to somewhat, to try to give something to our communities that haven't seen a renovation in a long time. But I'm aware that it's not necessarily popular in some parts of our county, but I think it's something I'm even seriously consider as representatives of every school and community here in our county.
Does anyone want to rebuttal on this topic? I'm just going to change your line. All right. The next question is on curriculum again. STEM or science, technology, engineering, and math have become a real focus, not just in Frederick County, but nationally in education. However, what do you think is the importance of the arts and other non-STEM courses, such as civics and history, in the curriculum? And how do we guarantee opportunity- And how do we guarantee opportunities in the arts and the humanities from pre-K through high school? Ms. Mason?
I plead...
Oh, wait, you're on a question. I'll show it. I have to follow the rules. Anybody else?
You can do rebuttal.
You have to rebut. Yes, you can rebut, Ms. Barrett.
I had started to talk about this during my last 30 seconds of something, but, you know, if you talk to the folks who run Google, they don't want to hire a bunch of mathematicians and scientists. In fact, they look for English majors and humanities majors. We, you know, I think Mr. Mason spoke this... This is two minutes.
Yeah, this is...
Sorry. But this idea that of, we need to be expanding opportunities for our kids, and I do believe when we're doing things like giving a kindergarten readiness assessment to four- and five-year-old kids and starting to talk about college preparation when they're in fifth grade, we are starting to put pressure on kids that impacts their mental health, and we are rushing kids to be 18 and have it all figured out. And I know, I sure didn't. And my path has been winding, and I think my life has been better for it. And the opportunities these kids have who may not have acted before to be in a school play for the first time, kids who pick up an instrument in fourth grade, and maybe they're not so super in math class, and maybe they're not going to be... But reading sheet music helps them be critical thinkers, and they get to be involved for the first time, even if they're not captain of the football team. These opportunities are crucial, and we have to prioritize them, just like we prioritize technology, engineering, mathematics, the computer stuff. We are not training computer scientists. We are training citizens, and folks have to find a way to engage, and they have to find a way that makes them feel useful in their school community, and even if they're not the best pre-engineering student, they don't want to take a computer science class. It helps make our kids feel included, because we all indeed will find our way in this world if we just have the opportunities to pursue what we're passionate about and stop rushing.
Anybody else want to answer this question? Or have a rebuttal? The next question is another funding question, or both funding, I think, it touches also on curriculum as well. What to you is the proper role of charter schools and school choice in Frederick County public schools? And what questions should the Board of Education be asking before they approve a charter school application? Ms. Yoho?
I'm firmly behind public schools, and so charters are public schools. But we've seen in all parts of the country where if charter laws are not well-written, it opens the door for a lot of fraud. And the courts have even ruled in some cases where, let's say, you have a private entity that rents space to a charter school, because they're private, they don't have to open their books. And I'm sorry, if you are using public taxpayer money, your book should be open. We should be accountable, both with our behaviors, our grades, and our finances. And so, charters can fit into the public school. I like Maryland charter law. I know it's not popular with people who love charters. They feel it's too stringent. But what it does is, it says, "If you have a good plan..." And Frederick County has the first charter school in Maryland. "If you have a good plan that is addressing a need that is not being addressed in our regular public schools, we'll hear you out." Beyond that, you have to have a good plan, not just initially, but you have to have all the pieces in place, and that's not an easy thing to do. It's probably why we don't have any charter high schools, because of the onus that's on charter, I'm sorry, high schools where kids graduating and getting ready for college. So, I'm for that, but it has to be done, I think, within our regulations, and I think we've done a good job of it. Beyond that, I am not for vouchers you've never seen anywhere. I can understand the lure of vouchers, especially in DC, places like that, for parents of poverty, the opportunity to send their children to any school. It's not a reality, and where charter schools have been tried, it's not been very successful.
Thank you. Somebody else want to answer this question? Want to use a rebuttal on this question? This one? I can help.
I do have to do that. That's all right. The charter school, I don't like to mix national charter school and Maryland charter school, because Maryland is very different. Every student has the ability to sign up for the lottery to get in them. They are absolutely accountable, and they have to do more audits than we as a public school do. They're also accountable to our Board of Education, and they give us annual reports, and we review those, which is incredibly important, to hold them accountable for what they're doing. I have approved a charter school, in Frederick Classical Charter in my time on the board, and I have also turned down a charter school, which was Frederick Outdoor Discovery. One had an excellent, amazing curriculum and plan, one did not, and that's what you need to look at and be a part of as a Board of Education member in Maryland. See, I got a bell, too.
The next question is a curriculum question. How important do you think it is for the Board of Education to set standards for a minimum amount of unstructured time or recess at the elementary and middle school levels? Are we giving enough time for recessing? Are certain students currently given enough unstructured time in their day? And how can we safeguard time for recess when all these other demands are being made on teachers and students for their time in the school? Does anybody have questions left? Yeah, so at this point, Dr. Miller has a question, Ms. Williams has a question, and... That's it?
How many questions do you have left here?
A few.
Oh, okay, well, I might save mine. I'll hear all the rest. Although, I will say, I am an advocate for recess. Matter of fact, I'd like to go to recess right now. Am I allowed to use that?
You can rebut. You want?
I'm not rebuting anything. I am a board member and a citizen and a parent who could not be more in favor of more activity, more unstructured play for our kids. In fact, I have drafted a policy, I serve as chair of the board's policy committee, and I have drafted a policy that would, if approved by the board, would seek to almost double the amount of recess or unstructured time for elementary schoolers. And on these behavioral challenges that our kids apparently have, we are asking our kids to sit more and stare at screens more, and sit and respond more, and they absolutely need more activity and more unstructured time. See, and I didn't rebut myself.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rebut that rebuttal. The next question is, again, about diversity. Is FCPS doing enough to support English and language learners in our schools so that they can be successful and move out of the ELL program? And is the school doing enough as we change and move kids back to their, ELL students back to their home schools to help prepare those schools for students that will be arriving, I believe, next year? This goes to the two people on the board. Don't want to rebut this particular question?
I'm not a rebuttal, but they, I think I only have a question.
You are indeed, though. Testing.
Okay. I'm pleased to go over here.
What is your view of the correct balance between time spent learning and time spent preparing for and administering high-stakes mandatory tests? And we have made changes in the school systems. Do you feel we have made enough changes? What is the proper role of high-stakes testing in our schools? How should we be using high-stakes testing?
I know, I was going to...
Just be polite. Dr. Miller?
Testing has gotten out of control. We have, there are so many assessments right now, park assessments at all levels, the graduation requirements. We have this new science test, the new standardized science test that will be happening as a graduation requirement. It's a little frightening for me, and I'm a science person. It's going to cover three different categories over three different classes, and it's going to be cumulative for our high schoolers, and they have to pass this test to graduate. The, going to the online testing, we have been testing more on how students learn the computer versus how they actually learn, and that has gotten, has taken us way off track of what we're supposed to be doing. We did write a policy to try to limit the amount of testing, at least even trying to do what we can locally. We cannot do anything about the Maryland test, because obviously our kids have to be able to pass them to graduate. So, we have to be able to advocate for other measures of success than the standardized testing. We have to be a voice for our vulnerable students. Some of these tests cause a lot of distress in our students. We have a lot of special needs students that we put through all these rigors of this testing that doesn't even reflect what they're actually truly learning in the classroom and what the teachers are truly teaching. Even our benchmark tests that we're using for students are not truly reflective of what they're learning, because they are actually more like standardized tests. They're like little mini park tests, and I would actually like to, my plan is to re-evaluate how we're doing with benchmarks, just like I did with the CREST testing. We have to make sure that the tests are equitable, that they are fair, that we do provide the supports for our special ed students. But mainly, we have to make sure that our students have the freedom to learn from the teachers and have time, the teachers have time to actually teach, and not be so structured in what they're doing to have to do certain things by a time basis, by a certain point in the curriculum, by a certain test, because it's not being helpful for anyone. And, oh, I have so much more to say on that. Talk me out of it.
Thank you. Does anyone want to rebut on this question? Mr. Hatt?
So, I'd just like to agree with what April said. Nationally, we got confused with testing. Testing's currently a $400 million, $700 million industry nationally, and we really have teachers that are not being able to teach the curriculum which they want, but they're really having to teach to a test, and they spend so many days a year preparing for this testing specifically. And that test, you're right, is absolutely random, and the question is, how often do you use a computer to do it, especially things like math? How do you teach kids how to take a test on math on the computer with it? And it's clearly not equitable across the board. You got students, 41% overall, that are passing this test now on the state level, but 7.1% of our special education students are passing this test, 22% of our framework students are passing this test, and 25% of our students of color are passing this test. It's clearly not equitable. Hey, Alan, did you get all that written down?
Those disclaimers, man.
I simply asked my daughter, "Are you overtested?" And she says, "I'm still doing Global Scholar, and it's a waste of time." And we were told three years ago that she would stop doing Global Scholar. So, where are we getting lost in stopping all the testing? We need to figure out how we are going to stop testing. I understand we're getting money from the state and the federal, but, you know, we're having our kids take tests that don't make sense, that they're not learning from them. So, we really need to figure out how to reduce the testing and help our students learn.
Mr. Ray, brief rebuttal. My younger sister attends the Rock Creek School. She's severely intellectually disabled, and she's had a test before. This is a state issue, but I think it proves a point, where she was asked to pick whether a dime or a quarter, and which one is worth more. They put it on her right side, and know she's going to pick it as her diamond in hand. She's gotten 100% on her math park. I just want, so, my point is, we're wasting a lot of time with some of our special ed students testing, and it's concerning. She should be doing other things like unstructured playtime. It's just, it really is phenomenal, I mean, just phenomenally upsetting what they make some children do at the state level.
All right. We'll move on. It's all on you.
Ding, 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 ding.
What are your views on how special education services are provided in our schools, and have we been making progress in servicing special education students? Do you feel that the school system is moving in the right direction with special education? And if not, how can the board better support the special education program, both the teachers and the students in FCPS?
I do not have an answer for that, unfortunately. I don't have children in the school now, and I have it for three or four years. April down there is...
I'm sorry. Can we have an extra rebuttal?
I know, I know.
So, I wouldn't be able to give an intelligent answer on that question. I just don't.
We'll move on. There are a couple people who can rebut, and like, he's 30 seconds on this.
Can I rebut?
You can.
I just want to say, based on my earlier comment, I think special ed in Frederick County is wonderful. I commend the board for approving the new Rock Creek School. It's a wonderful decision they made. Wrong location, but it's a wonderful decision. I, we do, we are one of the best counties in the state if you're a special needs family. And for me personally, I'm a huge advocate of special needs children here in our county. They have a special place in my heart. But no, I agree, I think we're definitely moving in the right direction, and we provide incredible services for all our special needs students here, and I commend the board for that.
All right. The next question has to do with... How do you view the current relationship between the Board of Education and the community? This is really a question about communication and transparency. How can the board be more accessible and responsible to the community it serves?
I think pretty much that they have, there's a good relationship. I think if you want to be involved, you do. You seek out, you go, you find out when the meetings are, you know, what they're doing. It's, you know, meetings are televised, there are meeting minutes, you know, it's everywhere. I've gotten involved from the very moment my child entered kindergarten more than 32 years ago, and I've never stopped, because I want to make sure I have a clear understanding of what's going on with him, with the school, how it's working. I think it's important to be able to do so. My reason for running is just that. I mean, I don't have my own children in school, but this is so very critically important, teaching our future citizens, future voters, our future adults. So, I think there's positive, positive feedback when I talk to people about the Board of Ed and, you know, obviously my experience with volunteering, but now that I'm not volunteering in Frederick County public schools, when I say I'm running for the Board of Ed, "Oh, yeah, 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 I know, you know, and they're doing this and that," and that's good. We want people to be informed, so I think it's been positive.
Mr. Gahn?
Just say that that has been a big question of mine since being on the board, community participation, involvement, and I think the school system's done a much better job. It always can do better. But the Frederick High School redo project was a great example where the community was used to come up with the replacement or renovation project for that. The community bought into it. We've used that same model as for our other school replacement projects, and our community advisory committee's also done a good job of trying to get community feedback. So, we're here as a conduit for the community to get back to the board, to the school system, and I think, again, we've done a good job with that, and we will continue to work on it.
Thank you. Mr. Mason? Answer or rebut?
I helped two families. I know two families that had pre-K students trying to get into kindergarten. They took the test, they were told no. Had to go in and find out why they were told no. There was never any answers about why your student couldn't get into kindergarten. My personal experience with my daughter, we were told no. We were told she's properly placed, because she couldn't get an accelerated mat고. I was never told why. I was just told she was properly placed. Okay? My question was, "Why?" I was never given a reason why. I think there needs to be better communication between our school system and our parents, and especially when we tell our parents, "No, your child cannot do that."
All right, that closes out the question section of our program. Before we go to your closing statements, I want to thank you all for being here again tonight. I really thought the thoughtfulness of your answers, you also are a very well-prepared group, and I really appreciated the discussion. Liz is looking at me, I'm going to be done a little bit early. So, on behalf of everybody here, I think we should give them a round of applause. Hopefully, this will not be the only forum for the Board of Education candidates. I would urge maybe our newspaper or some other community organizations to really step forward and perhaps organize another forum, but I hope to see more forums. So, we have one minute each for a final statement. We'll go in reverse alphabetical order, so we will start with Brad Young.
First off, I would like to also give you my thanks for coming out and hearing more about the Board of Education and the great candidates that we have this year. It's been an honor to serve on the board the past eight years. I'm proud of many things. Just to list a few, we talked about budgeting transparency, that was a big one. I think we've done a good job at that. The welcome... The welcoming and affirming policy, Policy 443, and our equity policy, it's been there. Handling some of the new seat construction needs that we've had with Frederick High, Urbana, the new school that's going out, Butterfly Ridge, Sugarloaf Elementary, replacement of Rock Creek, Waverly, and moving on down the line, the projects that are there are extremely important. Tomorrow morning, I'll be going down to Urbana Elementary. They received one of only six schools in the state of Maryland to be a blue ribbon school. I'll be down there celebrating with them tomorrow morning. We have a great school system. It can always be better. I'm very proud to have gone through it, my children and now my grandchildren. I appreciate your consideration for a vote.
Ms. Yova?
So I'm going to end up saying some of what Brad just said. As somebody whose three children went through the system, now granddaughter in kindergarten, someone who's worked for the system for 25 years, I see Frederick County Public Schools as a place that has tried to do its best through the years. I'd like to help them continue that. I'd like to give them a different perspective, specifically work on continuing safe and welcoming schools, opportunities for all our students, Career Tech Center, and the salary resource pool, so that we can have the best staff for our students. Thank you for coming.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. And I would like to first say thank you to everyone coming out. Good luck with your decision because these are some awesome, awesome candidates. Please give them a round of applause. Thank you, Gary. Frederick County is a great place to have raised our three children, but every child is deserving of a quality education. And while we're not there yet, we can continue to get better. And so I'm hoping to sit on the board one day to have that happen, to make good decisions. We use teacher pay, paying the teachers what they deserve to keep them here, to work here, to live here. Also, safety, that has to remain in the forefront of our minds on how we can continue to make everybody, to make our systems as safe as we can. And it just, it's going to take a cooperation of everybody doing their part, not just the teachers, the schools, the mental health industry, the sheriffs, police departments. So, yeah, I'm proud to be sitting here with the rest of these folks, and on June 26th, I ask for your vote.
Ms. Crowe?
First of all, I want to say thank you for everyone for coming out. You guys have been a great audience. The board candidates have been wonderful. It's my first time to really get a chance to hear from them, so I thank you guys. I learned from being here. Greatness walks through our FCPS school hallways every day. My focus is expanding their opportunities through leveraging information technology, which has helped me expand my opportunities in life socially and economically, expanding vocational opportunities, making sure that we increase and improve our diversity in our staff, making sure that we increase teacher pay. So I ask for your vote. I'm a hands-on guy in the schools every month. Candidate, masaietraubman.com is my website. Ask for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
Well, I'll just echo, thank you all for coming out this evening. It's such an important race that locally often gets overlooked. A big thanks to Gary for moderating this evening. It's an absolute pleasure. The biggest question I get asked when I'm running, I get asked, why are you running? I think, as you mentioned, the incredible diversity of race, gender, and age up here is, I think, remarkable. And I say, this election's very personal for me. You know, like many voters here, I was born and raised in Frederick County. I know how lucky we are to live in a county as wonderful and as diverse as Frederick County. Here, we have a wonderful school system. I want to work to improve them. I hope that by sharing my beliefs tonight, I've earned your vote or at least become a consideration in your mind. So again, I encourage you to reach out and chat me anytime at camderrana.com or afterwards. It's been an absolute pleasure, and I look forward to hopefully running your vote. Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
I'm going to get this answered. Thank you all for being here tonight. I have presented and then I received approval to start Special Education Strategic Work Group, which will evaluate special education communication, implementation, integration in the classroom, and make recommendations for streamlining the IEP process for families. This committee is going to assess barriers to providing quality instruction and intervention for our special education students and how to retain our amazing special education teachers. I strongly support motivated teachers and administrators that put kids first every day and as a result, change lives. I envision a Board of Education and a school administration that work together in a system of checks and balances for a common goal of high student achievement. I don't rubber stamp decisions from the administration. I try to create a positive climate for ideas and to actively solicit community feedback and have involvement in the policymaking process. Accountability has to be able, you have to be able to look with an honest lens. I'm not a politician, I am a parent, and I am very, very happy to be here tonight to talk to you about education. If you, I will be around afterward if you...
Mr. Hatton?
No, I'm just getting Mr. Mason, I'm sorry. Mr. Mason? History, not English. Gary, thank you very much for moderating. Thank you all for being here. My website is jasonmason.org. If you have any questions, please email me. In 1984, I entered Monoxie Middle School in the enriched level classes. My family said, no, we want them in advanced level classes. Several years later, I went through the same situation, 32 years later with my daughter. How many kids have we missed? My goal for being on the education is to find those kids that were missing, raise them up. When we raise up the bottom, we push the top. What are we doing for our kids if we're not pushing them to be everything they can be? My goal for being on the Board of Education is to strive to be the best school system we have, to have the best teachers, to have the best administrators, to have the best school board, to have the best students we can possibly put out to our community. This is our community. We want to raise our kids to come back after they go to college and be a thriving citizen in this community. We all love it here. I grew up here. Thermoff is where I grew up, my mailing address. My dad's here, still there 42 years later. I love Frederick County, and I appreciate you all being here tonight. Jasonmason.org, please, I hope, I urge your vote this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Hatton?
So once again, I'd just like to thank the Women's Democratic League of Frederick County, Northern Dems, Derek moderating, all the candidates for a great forum this evening, and everyone who came out this evening to learn more about our candidates. So just to reiterate some of the points I made this evening, I really think we need to work to expand programs like CTC to help provide opportunities for our college, for our college-bound, well, they're non-college-bound students. We don't really have to work with our special education budget to help ensure that those students are getting what they need. We need to expand our SRO program to ensure that every student should not have to be fearful of walking into a school in the morning. And we really need to work on decreasing the high-stakes testing on our students that we currently are providing them on. So next year, I really hope to have the opportunity to be able to bring my unique perspective to the Board of Education and really begin the process of helping to make the Frederick County Public School system better for our future generations of students. Thank you, and I hope to run your vote on June 26th.
Thank you. And Ms. Barrett?
So I reiterate the appreciation and thanks of everybody up here, and I am, it's been a pleasure. This is a great group of folks. I'm going to be frank, the difference between me and other candidates is that I have spent three and a half hours, or three and a half years, we share a great many priorities up here. And I joined the board in 2014 as the only non-incumbent who was elected. I joined a board that had a culture and practices, but I had things that I wanted to accomplish. My first year, I was the champion. I voted for Policy 511 to roll back on testing in Frederick County. We have ways to go. These are not final steps. I championed and pushed through Policy 443, our welcoming and affirming policy. I supported and voted for our equity policy, 444. I have been hard and tough about special education because my own student's experience and many other students' experiences in Frederick County have been not optimal for our special education students, and we need to do better. And that doesn't necessarily mean we need tons more money, we need better strategy, better direction, better training. So I'm going to continue to work hard. I want to celebrate our school system, but I want to have the hard conversations that make progress. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we finish up the House Committee, I thank you all for being here tonight. Could the folks from the Northern Democrats and the Women's Democratic League stand up and help plan this event so we can give them a... I believe until April 3rd, so if people want to mangle and talk, I know I have no opportunity and wants to, but anyway, we have a little time, so just give it to Mason.